I'd like to call this May 21st meeting of the Cookville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Present. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
We have one addition, item 13, auctioneering services, consider approval of proposal for auctioneering services to sell by public auction. House is located at 925 South Gate Drive and 636 Fairgrounds Street.
Alright, thank you.
Podster is Jim Shipley.
Yourself. Alright, do we have any other additions or corrections? Seeing none, can we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Have our motion in our second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
That brings us to our old business portion of the meeting. We have two items. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May the 7th. Do we have a motion in a second to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Our motion in our second. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing no discussion, um, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item three, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 090404, amendments to zoning code section 208 to establish architectural design requirements. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
May council members, the proposed amendment has been approved by the planning commissions, recommended for adoption by the planning department. The planning department has not received any comments, but I understand that you have received one email since first reading.
Do we have a motion in a second to approve on second reading?
Vote for approval.
Second.
Have our motion in our second. Any discussion by the council?
This does include our amendment?
Yes, it does.
What section was that?
Wasn't it?
I believe it's page four, number one.
Two A. Page four.
Two A.
One oh eight A four, A three, two A.
Got it. Thank you. Any further discussion on the second reading? Comments? Any comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. If you could come up and identify yourself?
I'm Debbie Hannah.
If you could speak into that microphone there. Thank you.
Hannah. I'm Debbie Hannah. I'm the one, I guess I'm one of the ones that sent you an email. I'm real concerned about this amendment. I don't think y'all realize what it means, unintended circumstances, that, for example, along Washington, between the high school and 10th Street, there are two buildings that meet your code. Two commercial buildings. Out of all the 20 businesses that are along there, and churches, this means that, you know, all those businesses, a lot of them are startup businesses, can't start up. Okay? And that, yeah, it would say, okay, this is going to make a really pretty town, a really pretty empty town, is what I'm concerned about. No businesses to start up. For instance, I gave you two examples, your business. Dr. Copeland started in a little tiny house, smaller than what's in Outdoor Experience. He added on, and then he could afford more, tore it down, and built his fine office now. The same way with LW Legg. Sixty-three years they celebrated yesterday, but they started out in a little bitty thing, waited, saved money, now they built him a nice fine building. Avery Express, started out in Livingston in a block building, okay? It, half the town, I guess is employed by them, and they're an international company now. So, you're going to cut out all the startups and cut out all the possibilities of new business, new employment, and you're going to have to, you know, give tax breaks to these out-of-town companies to come in, just so we can have somebody to hire us. And I have a real problem with that.
Well, I appreciate your comments and your concerns. If, James, could you address some of those for us and before we open up the council?
Well, I don't know of anything that stops a business from going into a house and starting a business now. If it's a wooden house, they can still do that. The board will allow you to provide vinyl on a wooden house. It is allowed with board approval. We amended the code last week to allow blocks for the places that don't, that aren't visible from a street.
And so any existing structure will, will, so any of those 20 businesses you're talking about in Washington can still be businesses from here forward?
And if something were to happen to those businesses, they can build back as they are. They don't, unless it's over 51.
That's 50%.
Fifty percent destroyed, then they have to build according to the architectural codes. But if they have some damage, they don't have to repair according to the code. They repair according to the way it was.
Well, let's take Mama Mia Restaurant. They started out as a block building from the beginning. It was a block, a new block building that they built to have a restaurant. Later on, I think they put brick in front of it, after about five, 10 years. Okay? Now they've built, moved and built entirely new building, but, you know.
But if they had stayed on North Washington where they were.
Yeah.
They could have stayed there as it was.
But they couldn't have ever started like they did originally. They couldn't have built their first block building.
That was, they did not build that.
That was there originally.
That was a tasty freeze and everything else for years.
Yeah.
It was still a restaurant block building.
Yeah. It could be a restaurant block building tomorrow, too, if that business that there, that there now goes out.
But there can't be a new one. You can have a new block building.
Yes, you can, as long as.
On the sides and rear.
On the sides and rear, we'll, we'll be able to be that if it's painted.
It's painted.
You mentioned also about the overall cost of, and you used a percentage, very low, very, very close.
Well, we.
And I can't remember exactly what you used.
We look at a typical 10,000 square foot commercial structure, and the estimates that contractors gave us was total project costs, this would increase at between one and two percent.
So, it was very close, very close.
I think I have 10,000 square foot new building.
We didn't look at every square footage that you could. This was just a typical commercial development.
Yeah, well, you should have looked at a small one and a large one. 10,000 foot's quite large.
Well, ma'am, I'm, I'm the city council's representative of the planning commission.
Yeah.
And I can say to you that this is probably one of the most minimal standard, architectural standards that there is. And as a planning commission member, it's our goal to try to set a standard as we want, what we want the city to look like 20 years from now.
So we want to look like the brownstones of Philadelphia.
Well, I, I think that it's sort of a double-edged sword in that if you don't set some standard, then your town diminishes in quality to the point that no one wants to invest there. And I think that this sets a minimum standard that allows for development, but has controlled development. And, you know, I, I think your concerns are very legitimate, and I think you've made some good points, but I think if you, with further review of the actual ordinance, you know, because we did amend it to allow the block, and, and I think if you can build a block structure, and, you know, that, that is a cost savings and an economical factor that might help new businesses.
Yeah.
Most new businesses, including the Outdoor Experience, do not own their structure.
I, I understand that. It goes, it's an evolutionary thing. First they rent.
Well.
Then they build as cheap as they can, or.
Right.
Buy one as cheap as they can, and then they remodel, and they add on, and then they bulldoze it and build a whole new one.
Well, and, and.
In the road.
And I would strongly, and, and served on the planning commission as, as Councilman Williams did for four years, and would strongly recommend that the city of Cookville look into a way to maybe even set building permit costs less expensive towards the center of town, and more expensive on the outside of, outskirts of town, so as to encourage redevelopments of older buildings in the downtown area. Because what that does is, is it concentrates the business in a closer area to allow pedestrian usage of those areas and to walk and circulate in town. If, if you have a veterinary clinic on the north side of town, and an outdoor store on the south side of town, you've got to drive across town, and that creates congestion. As we have more and more people drive, there's limited amount of space that we can build roads, so we're confined in our transportation abilities. So, direct redevelopment in the downtown area is a good thing, and it's something that we've looked at. And, and that's why we have zoning codes, and, and we, we're trying to reduce sprawl. This is a progressive thing as, as.
I'm, I'm all with you for reducing sprawl.
Ma'am, I've got the floor right now, but, but, you know, this is something that is, is forward-thinking and looking out into the future. This, this is probably not going to have a tremendous amount of impact now. The, the benefits of this will occur into the future. And I think that it, this is just the first step.
And I think, I think as it relates to the actual building cost, when we looked at the 10,000 square foot facility, what we were looking for is, how is this going to impact any business, whether it's small or large? And when you look at the total increase and the total construction cost is one to two percent, I think most good business owners would, would say, if that one to two percent was going to keep me from being successful, maybe right now is not the time. And I think that's why that percent increase in the cost was important to the decision as to why we were making the decisions we were at the planning commission level, and why it's gained so much support here at the council level on first reading. And I think with a minimal standard, architectural standard, we can always come back and look at it. It's not set in stone. That's one of the things, and that's why we set such a minimal standard. We're just trying to raise the bar. Being in construction myself every day, I, I travel to Franklin and Brentwood, Nashville, was there today, and the architectural standard in which we've put in place, by their standards, would be considered extremely watered down. So all we're trying to do is take one step forward, take a look at it, and see how it impacts our community going forward over the next 20 years. And we appreciate your comments, and they're valid, and appreciate you coming out today to help us.
One, one final statement. And remember, this, we have this review board that, that the developer can refer to in case he or she is not satisfied with the plan that's being rejected or whatever. So there's, there's a safety net there. So we feel that that is a good part of this ordinance.
I'll just echo one thing. I mean, I can assure you that no one on this council wants to hinder job growth, or, you know, vice versa of that. We have been diligent to, to try to bring new jobs here and better paying jobs and whatnot. So, as Councilman Williams said, this is certainly a minimal starting standard, and hopefully this can be built upon in the future as well.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any other discussion? Any further comments from the audience? Seeing no further discussion, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Item four, new business, consider on first reading, ordinance 090507, related to automatic, automated, automated, automated traffic enforcement. Sponsor Captain Mark Maxwell.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance to establish provisions for enforcing red light and speed at intersections that are controlled by traffic photographic systems. It does not adversely affect the vehicle owner's driving record, and is the initial step in implementing such system. Ordinance 0090507 will accomplish this and is offered for your approval.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
We have a second.
Second.
Have our motion in our sec, second. I'll open the floor up for discussion.
Well, I'll go ahead and jump in. This is extreme, this is an issue that people get very upset about, and since we've been discussing it and correct me, but we first saw the first presentations a year ago, February. Am I right?
About right.
It was in the, okay. And I, I did go to every single one of the presentations, and since then, I have started my own little red light camera instigation, and I have become an expert at watching people run the red lights in Cookville, Tennessee. And I walk up and down Dixie Avenue, and I know it's not one of the target lists, but my small beagle and I are up and down that street all the time. And two days ago, I saw the light, it turned yellow, and two people ran it when it was bright red. Now, first and Dixie is not a very crowded place, and it wouldn't be one of our target places, but certainly, when they went through, and I was behind them, I went click, click. And so it, I would like, if we were to go forth with this, to be able to let some of our citizenry see the information we saw.
I think all this does is an ordinance which is, allows for us to enter into an agreement with the traffic enforcement company going forward. I think, as you, some of you may have read in the paper today, there's two very bad accidents in the city of Cookville in the last 24 hours. At my office, which is at the corner of Interstate Drive and Willow, which is one of the areas we're seeing, there's been two traffic accidents, I know of in the last two weeks. One of them was pretty bad two days ago. I think in, in some of these areas in which we're looking, it's very difficult for our enforcement officers to be able to enforce the, the traffic lights because it's hard to get around as an enforcement officer, all the traffic that's going on. I think these traffic cameras would enable us to better patrol the areas to help reduce these accidents. And I think there's all, as we study this, there's always been mixed reviews as to the different studies. It's, many times in statistics, there are different things, but most of the research that we've seen, see that it does improve by reducing the number of incidents at, at traffic cameras. So, because of that, and the safety of our citizens, we feel like, or I feel like, it's a good, good step for us to move for, for.
And this tonight is, is just the ordinance, right?
Correct.
We will come back, we'll have a, at some point enter into an agreement. There'll be some proposal, final proposal made to this. We've had several, I guess, but tonight we're just laying the groundwork so that we can make.
Right, this is the initial step, and.
Right. It would be voted on again before anything's approved.
Right, and even once this ordinance is passed, that doesn't mean.
Correct.
That we've made that decision to have red light cameras, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. This is just enabling us to get there.
Mm-hmm.
But as we've been educated on this issue, and we, I understand that, that the public will be educated well before it would go into effect.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, things like, when that picture is made, it would, it would make the picture of the tag on the car and the light at the same time. It wouldn't be two different photographs. It would be the same, so you could know that that car was going through that red light, instead of having, I think we saw that in, in some of the demonstrations, that they thought that was an important.
That depends on which vendor you choose.
Which vendor you choose.
Right, that was one of the differences in the vendors.
Depending on which vendor you choose.
Well, that would seem to me a very important thing, to prove to the person it was, you know, you didn't put two photographs together and just say, okay, this, you have one photograph, making the picture of the light and picture of the tag. That seems to me an important point.
I agree with something to look into, for sure. We definitely want the most solid legal version.
But I think, I think it's just very important that the, the community is educated as to this, because, now, I haven't had very many people who spoke against it, a few have, but it's not a fee-grabbing kind of situation, in my opinion. It's a safety issue, and it's just so simple, you just don't run the light, and then there's no problem.
There'll also be a 30-day period where only warnings will be sent out.
Well, I think it's.
Most vendors will put on a, a public information program for all the public.
Yeah.
Before they start.
I think it's important for the public to know that the vendor is not issuing the tickets. The vendor is just providing the photographic evidence to the police depart, the police department, and a certified police officer has to review the photograph and the evidence, and then the certified police officer has to sign off on the citation. So it's actually the city that issues the citation, not the vendor.
But it isn't. It would be a non-moving violation, which would not count on your record as points.
That's correct.
That's by state statute.
Correct.
Very good. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I'm Debra.
Alright, one of you, you can line up over here.
I'm Debra Sam. And first off, I would just want to say thank you. I know you've all been working on this for, like I said, over a year, for our safety. And you might be wondering why I'm here, since I don't drive. But I was a little concerned with one of the presentations, and I know this doesn't address it directly, but I didn't know when to address it. One of the vendors said that they could also use the data to run information off for the police, and so I wanted to ensure that this ordinance, and what we contractually agreed to, is for running red lights and speeding only, not for, you know, getting information and not, and then the cameras are also not taking shots of pictures when it's not a red light running violation. Just, or if it is, then an announcement on the, either an ordinance passed, or on the front of the homepage, you know, your website, something, not just like a blurb in the paper and announcement section, but just so the public knows if you are doing that or not.
The reason for the, them making that comment, I remember, was for two purposes. One was for enforcement of things other than traffic violations. For instance, they showed the example of where they caught a company, or a gentleman who was stealing construction equipment.
Heavy equipment, yeah.
Because they were looking for a certain vehicle that was stealing construction equipment. Another thing is, it's also, having small children at my home, it's a way for them to police your community, to look for certain vehicles through an Amber Alert when a child has gone missing. So, they can capture this data, take photographs of license plates that come through your community, and quite possibly track people as they're looking for a child.
Right, but I would, as a member of the public, I'd like to know if our city is doing that. Does it tax pay?
I think that'd be part of, that'd be part of your public information, part of the whole public.
Okay.
Presentation, when we do select a vendor, if we do select a vendor.
Okay, so that will be very clear whether we're opt, the city opting to do that.
I would, I would hope that it could be very clear.
Okay, thank you, because I know legally you're not required to make that clear, so I just wanted to voice my opinion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Barnhart. I, in all honesty, am not convinced that this is good for Cookville. There are several reasons that, that really prompted me to say that. First of all, I'm always skeptical when companies come to present to our city reasons why we should employ them for services. They have a financial vested interest in this. I'm also, I'm glad to hear that, that, that members have started to think about this and collect anecdotal data on their own about how to protect and make sure that we have a safe city, and have, have controls in place that ensure that, you know, we minimize serious accidents. But anecdotal data is really not a substitute for statistically valid studies, and there is a wealth of data that the National Highway Safety Administration has put out. Last June, they published the, a, a very well-controlled study where they, they gathered data to have a statistical look at, at what were driving accidents. And red light, running red lights was, was very low in the list. It was almost at the bottom. It was two percent, two percent of the accidents that our, our government collected said that red lights were the problem. In 2005, the agency did a very large, a, a protocol where they looked at red light cameras. This was, this was done on a protocol that had well-defined endpoints and statistical methods, that they were going to cut the data to find out if there was a statistical improvement. And what they found, by looking under the original protocol, was that they could not show a statistical improvement at any of the individual intersections that they've had in the study. They broke the protocol, and they pooled all the data together in 2005, and they were able to show a slight statistical improvement for T-bone collisions and intersections. But they also found rear-end collisions increased, and head and neck injuries increased significantly. So at best, the study concluded, our government concluded, under a, a well-developed protocol, that there was, at best, a very slight statistical improvement in safety by using these cameras. And that really brings me to my, my real objection. There are other ways that if we are really concerned about situations in the city where we don't have safe intersections, we, we can look at reengineering the, the yellow light intervals, better marking, better enforcement, old-fashioned enforcement. And to simply bypass those, if, if that's what we choose to do, to go to a contract situation where we're shipping out of the county, out of the city, monies, to, to employ these outside firms that have a financial interest to, to sell us a bill of goods here, really bothers me.
Sir, we, we have a three-minute rule. I, I'll let you make another minute, maybe, and then we'll wrap it up.
Right. Well, we all want safety, but I'd like to do it in a cost-effective way, and if we have other levers that we can control to improve safety at intersections, I would like the council to, to give every effort to exercising those before we start shipping money outside of the city. money outside of the city. And secondly, I would independently have someone take a look at the National Highway Safety Administration statistically found studies, and not rely solely on what the service companies may be presenting to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Any further comments from the audience? Any further comments from the council? Seeing no comments, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Item five, consider resolution 090506 authorizing the City of Cookeville to submit an application for grant funds through the State of Tennessee Fast Track Program for the Highlands Business and Industrial Park sponsor, Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Mayor and City Council, this resolution authorizes the City of Cookeville to make an application for $750,000 of grant funds through the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. Should the grant be funded, it will get us started on our Highlands Business Park development. I recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and second to approve?
So move.
Second.
Our motion and second. Discussion by the council?
When do you normally hear back from this submission of grant funding?
Well, typically, it takes two to three months. We expect sometime maybe around September, but it also depends on how many other grants are submitted under this program and what the state budget is like, because this is state money. So we should know something at least by September 1.
Any further discussion by the council? Comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Item six, consider approval of appraisal services for the Rails with Trails project sponsor, Kathy Andrews.
Mayor and City Council, the City of Cookeville advertised for and received statement of qualifications for appraisal services to appraise the railroad right-of-way portion of the Rails with Trails project. We received two statements of qualifications. We received one from Standifer and Associates in Brentwood and Woodford and Associates in Knoxville. Staff recommends that we use Standifer and Associates. Their contract would be $6,500.
Do we have a-
I recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and second to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have our motion and second. Any discussion by the council?
Now, this is, is this all on us, or is this split?
The grant pays 80% of this.
Right.
So it would pay 80% of $6,500.
Right, and then the remainder is paid by?
Local funds, which is, which is out of-
The money you've raised.
Yes, yes, sir. Not additional funds, no. Nope.
Any further comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Andrews. Item seven, consider appointment to the Cookeville Tree Board. And we have been submitted a letter by the Cookeville Tree Board Chair, Ms. Peggy Evans. Cookeville Tree, I'll read the first part of this. Cookeville Tree Board has one more candidate for the tree board would like to be appointed. This is the last open position for the time being. This will go into effect May of 2009, and the name of the candidate is Mike Witt. Mike has met with the tree board and very acceptable by the board members, so I'll make that as a, as a motion to nominate Mike Witt.
Second.
We have a second. Any other nominations, or?
Whoever nomination sees.
All right, and do we need to vote? All those in favor?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And Kathy, if we could check on those dates, I don't know, I know we've talked about that a couple of times, when those voters fire their terms. Item eight, consider approval of change order in the contract for the Drama Center renovation sponsor, Mr. Rick Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request for a change order in the contract with Midstate Construction relative to the Drama Center renovations. As you are aware, the design calls for securing the lobby and patio areas with steel beams used as pilings driven down to bedrock, and we didn't really know how far those would have to go. So in the original contract, we included a price per linear foot for additional feet of pilings. We had 120 feet originally included in the contract, plus $20 per foot was the price in the contract for additional feet. We ended up having to go 436 feet additional, and that comes out to $26,160, and I am recommending your approval.
Okay, do we have a motion and second to approve?
So move.
Second. We have our motion and second. Any discussion by the council?
Is it normal, and Councilwoman Williams, you can probably answer this, about the addition, I notice in with this is the addition of extra days, additional contract days because of weather? Is that a normal instruction?
Yeah, normally, a contractor will set aside a certain number of days based upon weather, expected weather on an average calendar year. Obviously, this has been an above-average calendar year as far as weather days concerned.
So this gives them an extension of time because of those days?
Right.
It is an extension of time. Part of that is because of weather days. A few of those days are because of the additional pilings that were required.
Right.
And I do have another request for some additional days that is not included on here, an additional 10 days that I've just received because of weather issues as well. So if you're kind of projecting out toward a finish date, you can add another 10 days to that, if you approve, but that's not before you right now.
Okay.
Well, I think that it's fortuitous that we started this repair when we did, because once we got into the repair, we discovered that it really needed to be done, so I'm grateful that it's getting done and sorry about all the bad weather.
It's looking good.
It is.
The glass looks great.
Looks good.
And I went to an event there this weekend, and Chad was very patient and kind to everyone, even though they're all going in the back door.
I will say that the staff has handled it, we'd hoped to be finished by the 1st of April, and we had full houses, performances throughout April and May, and the staff has handled it beautifully and done very well, and the public has been very patient and considerate and understanding with the problems that we've had, everybody having to go in the back door.
Yeah, I didn't hear one person complain about it. I think everyone was thankful to see the progress over there, and so we look forward to beginning next spring.
I would remind Councilwoman Anderson's class that they will have to spell "fortuitous"
tomorrow in class.
Extra credit.
I don't know that I could spell it.
All right, do we have any other comments about the change order? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
Item nine, consider approval of a proposed expanded TVA Generation Partners Agreement sponsor, Mr. Tony Pete.
Mayor and council, as you probably remember, we have two agreements in place as we speak. One of those was a Generations Partners Agreement that was for residential and small commercial customers. The other agreement was Demand Generation Partners Agreement, and that was for the larger installations like Tennessee Tech is considering. This new expanded agreement incorporates both of those previous agreements and will replace those. Before solar and wind were the only qualifying energy sources, they have now added, the one that comes to mind is methane and others, as they may approve those. As you know, or probably remember, this is revenue neutral to CED. We're just, we're passing, having coordinate this between TVA and our customers. There is payment changes in this new agreement, and basically, before, it was for the residential and small commercial, it was 15 cents per kilowatt hour, and that included, that 15 cents included the local rate, which is, you know, eight and a half, nine cents. So the premium was somewhere around six cents on solar. The new program, there's going to be a 12-cent premium plus the local rate, so it's going to push solar up to about 21 cents if the rate stays where it's at. But that 12-cent premium will stay in place regardless of what happens to the retail rate. Wind is going down before it was 15 cents, and their studies indicated that wind turbines are much cheaper to install, and so they're going to offer a 3-cent premium on wind plus whatever the local retail rate is, which will get that around 12 cents, so it's not too much of a loss. Some other changes, the upfront incentive change before was $500 at TVA. We paid the customer, TVA reimbursed us. It's going to $1,000, so that's a big help. And as before, it requires individual participation agreements from each customer applying. And with that, I'd answer any questions you might have, but recommend your approval.
All right, do we have a motion and second to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have our motion and second. Discussion by the council? I just think this is great, we're moving in the right direction. Tony, appreciate your leadership and working with TVA to get this done and-
It's really a creative kind of situation.
Where's Ronnie Kelly tonight? Is he here? He's not here, is he?
Yeah. I might add, in case you don't know, on Sixth Street, Mr. Gordon Hunter has installed a solar system. It's all been up and running for a couple of months now. I seem to remember, the first monthly credit was $76 off his bill, the second was 80-something dollars, so it's doing quite well. And I'll also point out that ex-vice mayor, Grogan, at his business in Allgood has installed a wind turbine. If you get by there, it's pretty good-looking.
That's interesting, that's great.
Did he become an ex-vice mayor after he moved his business to Allgood, or?
I'm not real sure.
The other thing that's great about this is TVA's really stepped up their matching dollars in relation to this revenue. What it did for people that are interested in doing this is it reduced their return on investment by about five to seven years. So where it was like a 15- to 25-year payback, depending upon the size of the array, you were able to reduce that, which was a big benefit to a lot of people, and I think what's going to, you're going to look at more and more people thinking about doing this kind of thing. And right now, the federal government has a lot of grants in place where you can apply for grants to get these put on your home or business, and there's some really low-interest financing as well, so.
I know I've been getting a lot of information along that line, Councilman Williams, and Deborah has been doing a lot of research and providing that for me, and I thank her for that.
So this is, it looks like landfill methane, not Ronnie Kelly methane.
You mean sewer and water department-
That's right.
-methane.
Any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Item 10, consider approval of a license agreement and proposed bill of sale for a section of the TVA East Cookeville Allgood 69 KV line sponsor, Mr. Tony Pete.
Mayor and council, in setting the stage for this item, you might recall a year or more ago, all the controversy that you read about, about a new TVA line crossing Rutherford Mountain and feeding a different voltage substation in Allgood. This is a, basically, a result of that. As you know, that line was built, Allgood now is served by 161-13 KV substation, which will carry them well into the future. But as part of that, the 69 KV line that TVA fed the old Allgood station from is still in place, it's of no use to TVA. A portion of it from the Allgood substation out to the Allgood School has been sold to Upper Cumberland for $1, which allowed them the right-of-way to get lines out of that substation. The remaining remnant from the back of, or from near the Allgood School back to East Cookeville Substation, which is behind Heritage Forward, TVA is wanting or has made the offer to sell that to Cookeville for $1. I'm sure you're wondering why they would do that, reasoning being, it's twofold. They have no use for the line, as long as the line is standing out there, there is some liability to them in case it should fall. And additionally, who would want to go spend money to take something down that you have no use for? So that's why they're selling to Cookeville. We do have a use for sections of that line. There is a state highway crossing there, which is extremely difficult anymore to get that we'll be able to have. TVA is not selling us the property, they're selling the dirt, they're selling us the facilities on that. The transfer of facilities will be handled by the proposed bill of sale that's in your packet, that's just a standard TVA conveyance document. And the license agreement is for us to operate facilities on their property, and I'd recommend your approval of this item.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pete. Do we have a motion and second to approve?
Move approval.
Second. Motion and second. Do we have any discussion by the council?
So that, the facilities is the poles and the wire?
Yes, sir.
And they currently own the land, or do they lease some, in some instances, the land that they sit on?
I'm not sure. They indicate it's a right-of-way, that's generally a, they own.
Well, at some point, could, would we be forced out of some of that, or does this coincide with whatever they have as for a lease? I mean, I know it's a dollar, and we've got to take it, but I'm just asking the question for future reference.
I have talked to them about that, Mr. Shelton, and they assure me they will never have a need for that line, but they just have a board policy, they don't sell property.
No, no, I meant, at some point, if we own the line now and have responsibility for the line, and then they lose a lease on the land where it sits, will then be required to go take it down ourselves or renew a lease with somebody for where our poles are sitting that we're buying right now?
My understanding is no, that they own that property.
They wouldn't be, that's an easement at least, they wouldn't be leasing it.
Correct.
So it's no different than a utility easement we have for any of our lines underground or overhead, correct?
Correct, just the difference in, is it an easement, or is it a actual right-of-way?
Very good. Any further comments or questions by the council?
Well, I'm just assuming that you have that dollar in your budget, yes?
I do.
Okay.
If I don't, I have it in my pocket.
Okay, we might be able to take up an offering here for it.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Item 11, consider approval of design contract for the fire protection systems at the fire stations sponsor, Chief John Kendrick.
Mayor and council, what I have before you tonight is the contract with Moffett, offered as engineering to do design drawings for sprinkler systems and fire alarm systems for the four fire stations. This was part of a assistance to firefighter grant that we received that was budgeted last year for this current year we're in. Part of the reasoning behind this when we applied for the grant is some of the data that goes along with it. There's 150 fires a year at fire stations that average about $1.6 million in losses. That doesn't include the losses in the apparatus, the protection equipment that firefighters wear, or the loss in services where you're trying to reschedule and get things repaired.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion and second to approve?
So move.
Motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Do we have an idea how much this is going to cost us, besides, I know it's 10%, but how much is it?
His services are 13,000-1,500. We estimated the total project would be about 122,000. It was, the total grant was 198,000 or 199,000, with part of that being extrication equipment that's the next agenda item, and part of it's fitness and exercise equipment that we've not bid yet.
So this 13,350 is our portion?
It is. We've got to come up with 28,000, I think, was our required match, so this will be part of that match.
And you have that budgeted?
Yes, we had $20,000 budgeted for that.
All right. Any further comments? Seeing no comments, I'll vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Chief. Item 12, consider awarding bid for the hydraulic rescue equipment fire department sponsor, Chief John Kendrick.
Mayor and council, we advertise bids for rescue tools, for a rescue system. We had three bids, and we recommend Kibble Rescue System- We had three bids and we recommend Kibble Rescue Systems as the lowest bid, meeting specs. I ask for your approval.
All right, do we have a motion and second?
Move approval, second.
We have our motion and second. Any discussion by the council?
And this is lowest evaluated bidder because they did not bid on the mini cutter.
Correct.
One company did not have a mini cutter and because of the design, the tool, because of the design of the tools, even if we bought one of the other companies and added to the, the bidder in the middle, which was NAFCO, they're still higher than this. The low bid, which was GNC Supply, had major exceptions. They only have two-year warranty on their products. Everybody else had lifetime warranties. There was less cutting forces and spreading forces on the hydraulic tools and with the technology in the new cars today, it takes those higher forces to push and bend and cut metal.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Any further comments by the council? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 13, consider approval of proposal for auctioneering services to sell by public auction. The house is located at 925 South Gate Drive and 636 Fairgrounds, Fairgrounds Street sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
I got another slide on there, James. Okay, the proposals for auctioneering services for those two addresses, 925 South Gate, 636 Fairgrounds, and these are the two houses that we acquired during the Fairgrounds Street Improvement Project. And we received two proposals, one from Monti Gall and one from the McWilliams Realty and Auction. Monti Gall's bid was a 5% buyer's premium and the McWilliams was a 2.75% seller's premium, but it was only on the, on the highest house sold. In other words, if one sold for 100, one sold for 50, it would be 2.75% of that 100. With the economy like it is, I'm a little nervous in charging a buyer's premium and I would think that most buyers would just reduce what they were willing to pay for the house up to the 5%, maybe not the full 5%. And they both made proposals that if, if neither property sells, McWilliams estimated $800 in advertising and an administration fee of 500 and Monti Gall did not disclose advertising, so I just assumed that his would be the same, $800. And he proposed a $1,000 administrative fee. If both properties do sell and the buyer does reduce his bid price by 5%, the net effect of that would, would favor McWilliams. McWilliams' net sales receipts under that scenario would be just over $200,000 and Mr. Gall's would be 193,950. So based on this analysis, I would recommend we award it to McWilliams Realty and Auction.
All right, do we have a motion and second to approve?
So move.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion by the council?
Mr. Shipley, both these, we discussed this on Monday, but are we selling these absolute? Are we setting a minimum bid?
I, I would think we'd set a minimum bid.
Do we need to amend the motion to set a minimum bid?
Well, I don't know if y'all are prepared to do that tonight.
Or we can, we can do that a later day.
I think I could just consult with you before we get ready to sell it. I mean, what, what's the minimum we're ready to take for?
Okay.
I don't think you have to vote on that.
Okay.
And I, I would think that we'll probably set the auction for these properties probably on a Saturday the same day and need to allow for about a month for advertising, so, but I'd like to get it, get it scheduled before it gets really, really hot.
Mm-hmm. Very good. Any other comments or? From the council? Any comments or questions from the audience?
I had one other question.
Sure, go ahead.
The, do we buy these properties with bonds?
They were part of the bond proceeds for that project.
What do we do with the proceeds when we receive it back?
Put them back in the bond fund.
Okay. I didn't know if it goes to the general budget or not. Just put them back in the bond fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, that concludes our normal scheduled business and at this time, we open up the floor to our citizens and our delegations. If you'd like to come and speak for up to three minutes, we open up the microphone and just get up and speak, tell us what's on your mind. And I'll also, while you're thinking about your comments, open up the floor at this time to the council for any comments as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have my student council stand up. They came tonight to see what it's like to, look how obedient they are, to see what a real government does and they're a fine group of students and some of them are going to be moving on to the high school and some of them will be staying at Avery Trace Middle School and I'm proud that they're here tonight. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
One of the greatest parts about having a teacher on the city council is she can force people to come to the city council.
We get a few parents out of the deal, too.
Yeah, we did and thank you for the parents who came. I didn't recognize the parents and my co-sponsor Jonathan Smith, Angie Robinson, a mom, and Laura Fleming, a mom, too. So we're going to walk down to a local restaurant and celebrate the end of the year with a meal. So I don't know if it was this group that got them here or the free meal at the restaurant. So we'll see.
Very good. Any other comments by the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.